Good evening. My name is Linda Atkinson. I'm on the planning committee for the community meeting. And we'd like to welcome you to our meeting. I'd like to introduce Carla Jefferson from her church, and she'd like to say a few words.
Good evening and welcome, welcome, welcome everyone. I just thank the community for coming out and visiting the Lord, having this important topic here at the Lord tonight. We just want to welcome you all and let you know that we are the heart of the community, and we're glad everyone came out tonight. Thank you.
I'd like to open us up with a word of prayer. Most gracious in heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity to come together to share our concerns, our desires, our needs, just to see what is going on in our community. We thank you for the, this church that have opened their doors to us, and we ask for your direction to keep us focused on what the purpose of the meeting is. Bless us as we go forward in your name, in Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Amen.
We're going to now have the history of the Promised Land community, given by Dr. Bishop James L. Wilson. He is nephew of Mr. Libsy here.
Hello. She said, can I go in the pool pit or stand down here? So you know where a preacher is gonna go, right? I'm going in the pool pit. How everybody doing this evening? You good? Can you do me a favor before I get started? Look at your neighbor and introduce yourself. See, see, stop, y'all cheating, y'all turning to people that you know. Look to somebody that you don't know and introduce yourselves. Introduce yourselves. The reason I asked you to turn to your neighbor and introduce yourself to someone that you don't know, because you have now became part of the history of the Promised Land. Promised Land was a community established by people who weren't supposed to be known. Promised Land was a, a place where people who were counted out, people who weren't supposed to go on any record books, people who weren't supposed to have a name, it didn't matter what color that you were, didn't matter how much money you had. If you believed that you was a part of something, then you were a part of Promised Land. The Libsy's family has been part of Promised Land ever since I can remember, go back hundreds of years. I remember my uncle telling me stories about the Promised Land and how it was established and the people that came there. And as he began to tell me the stories of the Promised Land, I began to see a tear roll down his eyes. Because somehow we forgot the reason that we came together. We forgot why we came together, so that we can have a name as a community, where color lines did not matter, where education did not matter, but what mattered was that we loved one another. Throughout the years, families intertwined together and became one, but somehow the family reunions became smaller. Somehow the neighbors that you used to know, now you didn't know who they were anymore. It didn't just end at the Promised Land, it went on into our schools. Now you go to schools, there's no such thing as PTA meetings anymore. You can just pick up a phone and call the parent. They substituted our librarians for nurses, because they told our children that they have ADHD and attention deficit disorders, because they can't be still long enough, because we substituted books for computers. We stopped having PTA meetings, and now we're saying that we don't even need a middle school, we need alternative school, because the future of our children are lost. My uncle began to tell me as we drove down the street, he said, where are the libraries? Where are the middle schools? Where are the families that used to play around the lake? And as we began to drive up and down the streets, he said, please don't let it become lost. I moved my church from where we were located to this area for one reason, because I made my uncle a promise, that if anything solid ground can do to keep the dream alive, we would help do it. And my people believed it, but I want you to do one more thing for me before I take my seat, so I want you to look at the empty seats. Look around at all the empty seats. Those seats are missing other people that lost hope. They don't believe that we're gonna do anything. They don't believe that we're gonna get reconnected back to the schools again. They don't believe that we're gonna stand together with all these wonderful elected officials that come and, and do something about what is lost. So they stayed home. They stayed home and said, this is just another meeting. But I stand here today and tell you that this is not just another meeting, but this is the beginning of what Promised Land stands for, what Promised Land stood for. Because if we come together and we decide here and now, that we're gonna take our schools back, that our children will know and learn and know their history, that our communities will have the things that it needs, and that we will be one people again, regardless of the skin color or age or economic situation. If my uncle can stand here today and share his heart with you, he will say one thing, begin to love each other again. I can stand here and give you the history of Promised Land from slavery up to today, but none of that really matters today, because when you go home, if you don't change the way we do things, if we don't change the way we love each other, then it would just be another speech that you went to immediately. But I dare you today to make a vow, one to another, to say that we will be the promise that our ancestors came together and made. We are the generation in which they bought land forth. We are the generations that, in which they built their own schools for. We're the reason why they didn't tear down the big house, we're the reason why they took the pictures, we're the reason why they still come together at family reunions, people of all different colors. And if we stand here today and make a vow to one another in front of these elected officials, that we will be the promise, and our children will stand together one day and fill up a church in unity and in family, believing that their community is strong. Yes, we need a middle school, yes, we need libraries, yes, we need to have PTA meetings again, but most of all, we need to begin to trust one another again. We need to begin to talk to one another again, and we need to love each other again, the way my uncle loves this community. So I stand here today to tell you that he loves you with everything that's in him, but he's also sad. He's sad because everything that he lived for, everything that his family lived for, many families here is being lost. These men gonna come up today and they're gonna share their hearts, these officials that are running, they're gonna come and share their hearts, because they have made a commitment, that they're not going to let Promised Land and the surrounding community go. They have made a commitment, that they're gonna help reconnect us back the way that we should be, where we can be one community, loving each other again. So on behalf of my uncle, I thank you so much for being here, I thank you for coming out, and if you don't do nothing else tonight, get somebody's number that you don't know, reach out to them throughout the week, and let's be family again. If you agree with me, can you put your hands together? Thank you.
This is a moment in GCPA's history. The mayor, as he's called, was born in the Promised Land in 1930. But Thomas Libsy Sr. can trace his family ties to the area back nearly 200 years. Needless to say, the schools he went to were much different than the ones we have today. Where do black students go to school?
We went to the New Velford Church on the Yellow River. That's where I started out to school, and I started out in 1936, I was six years old.
Mr. Libsy says, back then, not all black children could attend school. For many families, all hands were needed to make ends meet.
Sometime you go regularly, but sometime when cotton picking time come, and you had to take off a little bit to pick cotton.
And those that didn't go to school didn't have much to work with, the tools of learning were less than ideal.
And we got our books from wherever the other schools had, and most of them have fronts and back on them, they were one eye complete.
At the time, white and black students were not allowed to go to school together, so this created two systems that were separate and unequal.
They were riding on buses, we had to walk.
But when he got to school, Mr. Libsy says, he was taught by some of the best.
I remember Miss Anderson, she was an English teacher, but she was a good teacher, and I won't ever forget that.
A teacher who helped mold a young man into the husband, father, businessman, and community leader he is today.
I'm Thomas Libsy Sr., and we were in the Promised Land.
Just reminds me of when I first moved into Gwinnett County. I was coming home from camp, my mother's sister and my dad had driven out to come visit me, and they stopped at a gas station off 20, and called me and said, they said, where are you? I said, I'm at the barber shop, where are you? They said, we're at this gas station, shell station on Bonoa, and I said, oh, just calling into the public's private, and I'll meet you there and you can follow me to the house. We get down to the road, and I said, leave it to Linda to move it to a house just beyond the Promised Land, not real now, but it's still part of the Promised Land. So that was just a little bit of on your strip connection with the, with the community. I met Mr. Libsy by accident about, about six months ago, he was looking for my neighbor, and he got me, and we've been joined at the hip ever since, trying to get things done. We'll go ahead and sit for our panel now, and elected officials that are here. Elaine Needman, she's gonna be a candidate for the US Congress. Mr. Alvin Wilbanks, he's the superintendent of Gwinnett Public Schools. Brian Whiteside, he is the solicitor for the county. Curtis Clemens, he's a candidate for the Gwinnett County Sheriff. And Dr. Allen, Dr. Bishop here. We'll start this for, I guess I'll let them introduce themselves and tell you what they want to share with you, and then we'll have questions and answers later.
Thank you for coming today. My name's Elaine Amangboy Needman, and I'm running for Congress in Georgia's 4th congressional district, which is most of this area. In the past few months, my friendship with Mr. Libsy has truly inspired my campaign. I've learned so much from being in his presence. He shared with me the history of the past in this area, he shared with me that even though people live further apart, they have looked out for each other. We're trying to be like the past today by coming together as a community to discuss crime and education in our community. I come from an immigrant family myself, with humble beginnings. My family came to this country seeking a better education for me and my siblings. Unfortunately, due to that, I am able to be able to say today that I'm an attorney, I have four children, and a wife of 11 years. I believe we need to come together more often, as a community, and assess our needs and progress. This is why I was excited to help Mr. Libsy organize this event when he asked me to. When leaders bring the community together, they are able to hear directly from the community what they need and what needs to be done to make things better. If I were your Congresswoman today, I would take your concerns and the issues directly to Washington and seek to address those needs, and I would be held accountable, because I would come back and have another town hall meeting to update you on exactly what took place. Unfortunately, we currently do not have adequate representation in Congress. A vote for me is for better education and increased funding for our schools, especially in areas like special education. I am a mother of a child with special needs, and the amount of students in our schools with disabilities has drastically increased over the years. I would like to see more federal funding being given for our children with special needs. A vote for me is a vote for improved veteran access. Mr. Libsy is a veteran, I just want to understand. We need to hear directly from our veterans and what their needs are, and take those into account when it comes to exactly what is working, what not, what is not working, so we can provide better for them more efficiently. A vote for me is a vote for improved economic development. We need high-paying jobs, and increase the minimum wage, free vocational schools, affordable college tuition. A vote for me is a vote for improved immigration, immigration reform for those seeking legal status. So I thank you again for coming to this event, and I look forward to hearing from you. My name's Elaine Amangboy Needman, and I'm running for Congress in this, in this district. Thank you.
Good evening. Those of us that are of the Jewish Christian faith, we've always wanted to come to the Promised Land, and we're here tonight. That's good. Mr. Libsy, back a little over a year, a year and a half ago, and I had a conversation, and we talked about preserved a few things. Number one, hemp. There's some of the things that it's done, and I noticed the video that you saw tonight, we sent somebody down to put him on video to capture some of that, hopefully there's more than that to it, if not, we'll see if we can't get somebody. I'm superintendent of Gwinnett County Public Schools, and I guess I'm here tonight to talk about schools. We are very happy to have him in attendance tonight. At least I probably miss him one or two. We have, I know the principal of Shallow Elementary School here, we have the principal of Shallow High School here, and I saw another principal somewhere, at least I thought it is it, y'all, Dollar, do you see him tonight? Dr. Clint, do I have him? Okay, so we have two principals here, and what we, there's been a lot of changes in this area, been a lot of changes in our country. One thing that hasn't changed is the need for every child to have a quality and effective education, and that need still exists today. We certainly try to make sure that that is happening. Needless to say, we, when I became superintendent in 96, we had a goal of about 83,000. I know today is just under 181,000, much more than double, about 100,000 more students. I'm not sure of the exact number of students that we had at that time, but six men, we built 72 schools, 72 new schools. And one of those new schools, there's a name, Anderson Libsy, and that's down the shore end of the heart of the Promised Land. That's a very beautiful school, we know, but you can see it well from the road. The schools in the shallow area and have served this area are certainly, there are a lot of changes that has been made. For example, Shallow High School is one of our, what we refer to as Academy High School. And some special programs that are there that aren't in every school. We begin, I guess, by, excuse me, Dr. Dollar, if I leave one out, let me know. But one of the first additions that was made several years ago, was the addition of International Baccalaureate Program, which is a very fine program academically, you couldn't get a program that has any higher respect or honor than that. In addition, there are a number of what we refer to as advanced placement courses, and if you, if students take those courses and score three or better, it's graded on a one to five, and if you score three or better, then most colleges across the country give college credit for that. So we have every year a number of students that graduate that certainly can go in college as a sophomore, unless they just have enough units for that first year, or at least once a medium have first semester. In addition to the International Baccalaureate Program, it did become one of our Academy High Schools, and that Academy High School really is paramount to offering a variety of career options, as well as professional preparation options. And that really has been something that I think has set Shallow apart. There is a program there that is referred to, and if you haven't visited or haven't made contact with Shallow High School, I really recommend that you do that, because this program is called the Wellness Health and Education Program, and it has a partnership with CBS, the pharmaceutical company. Most of us are familiar with CBS, they've worn on about every corner. So they have a partnership that really, I think, has really reached the attention of a lot of people and is working extremely well. They also have what's referred to as the ninth grade academy, and that's where students really are able to, they obviously take their regular academic courses, but it also teaches them and gives them a lot of perspective into various careers that's available to them. And then that way, that sort of prepares them to enter into one of those careers, or one of those pathways, that might be covering a career, if they want a career in health sciences, if they want a career in business or graphics, I think they have a, and we also have a STEM program there, STEM that you probably know, is science, engineering, technology, and math. And it's an integration of those subjects together, that really tries to bring in and bring in real-life, real-world activities and projects and services that really help the students really understand, the subject matter better, if they want to be an engineer, then it gives them a lot of insight into what it takes and what other jobs are available in there. So we feel like that those programs that are placed there at high school are really serving the needs of our students, not just today, but for the future. Now, we have, we get asked a lot of times in meetings, are we gonna have a, a, a high school that we sort of named them and called, we have actually two of them in place now in Norcross and in the Meadow Creek Cluster, theme high schools. And those high schools really are built to relieve old crowding in the school. We just don't put one of those high schools in an area that don't need additional seats. And rather than building a traditional high school, we build the theme high school. The one in Norcross is called Paul Duke STEM High School. The one in Meadow Creek Cluster is the McClure Health Sciences High School. But the STEM program that's in Shallow High School, you can get some of the same, very same thing that you get at the theme high school. So it may have a different name, but we certainly want to make sure that all of our students, our programs change as the challenges of the future lead us to make sure that we're preparing students for their future. And their future is not necessarily everything that's gonna be today, and we know that we're looking at building a high school in the eastern part of the county to relieve some crowding at Mill Creek, and that will have a theme of artificial intelligence. And one of the things that we know about that, according to the experts, is that artificial intelligence is gonna create about 59 million new jobs. The other side to that is, it's gonna eliminate about 59 million new jobs, so we have to make sure that we're changing our curriculum to the point, again, that we're preparing students for whatever their future is. So let me close, and I'll just speak of the shallow clusters since we're here in this area, the elementary schools, again, Mr. Libsy, if I didn't see the elementary school video, so we'll get Mr. Watson to do that, and while you are able to get around well to do that at that school, where that also will be part of the history and preservation of really some of the great work and leadership that you have provided, and we would do that. I'm sure there'll probably be some question time, so I'll close with that. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Solicitor General Brian Whiteside, and my job as Solicitor General of Gwinnett County is to enforce the laws of Gwinnett County, and the majority of those are misdemeanors and ordinances. And I'd like to thank the organizers of this event and Mr. Libsy for being here. I'd like to also thank Mr. Wilbanks also for all these, my, I showed My children went to Parkview High School and the elementary cluster there. My daughter went to Burkhart, we live in Lobe in Georgia. My son is a Gwinnett County Deputy Sheriff, he's a graduate of Georgia State University. Due to preparation that the Gwinnett County School System gave him, he was able to graduate with a three-point-eight grade average. People who were convicted, almost ninety-five percent of people that we convict don't have a high school education. If your child is not delivered by the time their child is four years old, he has an eighty-five percent chance of being arrested, seventy percent chance of not graduating from high school. So that's one of the reasons we're here today, because we feel education is important, that it prevents crime, and basically it betters our communities. I don't know many people know, but the overall plan for Gwinnett County in thirty years would be a highly intellectual community. If you look at Gwinnett County College, it's one of the greatest colleges in America. It gives people a substantial chance to educate themselves. Maybe they did make the few rates to go to UGA, but after two years I think you can transfer in. You also have Gwinnett Tech. And one of the points about that is that they are a skilled college. We have now contacted Home Depot, and we are going to do on the weekend skills, how to laminate a floor, how to paint, how to drywall, how to install an air conditioner, to give people different alternatives to college education. And the college education isn't for everyone, and I think, as Dr. Wilbanks said, you have to stay current. We're what I call a preventive agency. We're not only a prosecutorial agency, we're prevention. What we've done, when we found out that Walmart had three thousand crimes that had been called into Lobe in Georgia, and Curtis did the research for that, I ordered our people, number one, to issue a letter to Walmart that if they did not take affirmative steps to stop crime, because see, in the civil law, and I like to tell you I'm an attorney, do I think they think I'm a jerk, but I am an attorney. You have a civil duty, you have an actual lawful duty to prevent people from being injured on their property. You also have a duty to protect your employees and the citizens. So, you know, actually I do read because of both my parents were teachers. And I went to the law library, which is what you have to realize about Gwinnett County. A lot of people talk about Gwinnett County, the separatism and racism, but that's not always true. Homer Star, who was white, creating the law library for each and every person in Gwinnett County. It's almost two thousand square feet, and it's the greatest law library in Georgia. And it has more reference material than computers than any other law library in Georgia or in many states of the United States. So we went down and did research, and I found out that, number one, the duty of a business is to protect. The duty of a business also is to not help with crime. So we wrote letters to Walmart and told them they had to come to a point where they would come to compliance, and they have come to compliance. And we'll be meeting with them thanks to Curtis Clemmons, Pat See Austin-Gass, and we do periodic checkups in regard to that. Because I think one of the most important things is that a lot of children, number one, commit shoplifting at those organizations. And what Walmart does, they send out letters to actually try to civil sue these people, young people, sixteen, seventeen years old. And young people don't realize, if you commit a crime, it's a crime, a shoplifting is a crime of moral turpitude. It affects you getting a job. So these are another reason we're reaching out to the community to prevent youthful crime. And as a former police officer, and I was a police officer for fifteen years before I became an attorney, and due to the fact I had pretty significant incidents, my wife ordered me to go back to law school. So, because we had two hard day boys, and then one, you know our girls, they were all good boys. But anyway, so we were going to go back to law school. But the whole point in trying to make is that if a child commits a crime, their life is almost over. So what we did was take an aggressive approach to prevent crime of youth. Because we have people come in our office, they do a plea, or they're found guilty, they can't get a job whatsoever. So we started an exclamation program for minor offenses or nonviolent offenses. We actually restricted their records. And recently in Gwinnett County, we did something else to break up the gangs in Gwinnett County. They had a new hemp law where they let hemp be legal in Georgia. And when hemp became legal, you really can't tell the difference between marijuana and hemp on any street test. So when the police would stop people, they can't test on the street the difference between hemp and marijuana. I made a choice constitutionally and ethically not to enforce that, because I think it would be unfair to any citizen to be stopped, and you would not be able to scientifically tell what is marijuana and hemp. And I think that helped a lot of things, because right now I'm putting a bill to legalize marijuana. And people say, why do you want to do that? I've never smoked a marijuana cigarette in my life. My father was also a teacher there, man. But the whole point about that is, if we legalize marijuana, that brings back the gangs, because gangs sell marijuana. We continuously have cases where people, and I was talking to Dr. Wilbanks, we have sixteen-year-olds and seventeen-year-olds driving down Highway Seventy-eight all the time because they're crossing over to EKF County. They carry glocks, the gun, the gun of choice, thirty-two round magazines in the car, in the guns. And they ride, we used to call us police officers, two D. I ran a SWAT car in Gary, Indiana for forty years. So I know what crime is. And I know right now that it's a threat to the society, it's a threat to the school system. So this is one reason we legalized marijuana, because we can take the marijuana out of the hands of the gangs and basically tax it and let that money go to, I put the bill in, for number one, folk scholarships, number two, pre-K. And the third, the third avenue is police pensions, because when we got away from the police department, Curtis, he had a pension, we didn't have the whole one yet. And I think Pat See Austin-Gass and Earl Witten was the chief, and he had the whole pension plan. So I think there's a lot of right things we need to look at, look at in Gwinnett County. First, we want to tolerate crime. We make recommendations all the time. We had a person that had a shotgun that basically put it in somebody's face. I asked the judge to give sixty days. The judge put him on probation, but they said they already lost their child. So the point I want to make is that we're here for education and for prevention. Thank you very much.
All right, good evening. All right, I'm going to be very brief, and I'll be very much to the point. We are here because we are concerned. We are concerned about our communities, we are concerned about our children and the education that they will get in Gwinnett County, and we're also concerned about crime and education in the South Gwinnett area. And we're going to talk about that tonight, and you've kind of heard a little bit about it already, where we have heard from the panel, where crime and education or lack thereof goes hand in hand. And we got to do something about it. And so that's why we have come together as a community to discuss the issues and see where we can go next. And as I said, I'm going to be very brief, but before I can move on, I think we need to acknowledge something here. First thing we need to acknowledge, and Mr. Livesey, I hope you don't mind if I give your age out, but Mr. Livesey is eighty-nine years old. He is the patriarch of the promised land community. He is the one who initiated this meeting right here that brought all these people together. He is the one and his family that has a school named after him. He and his family are the ones who have Meet Livesey and Anderson Livesey Road named after them. They are the beginning of the promise to this South Gwinnett area. And Mrs. Livesey, I see you back there, would you mind standing up? Mr. Livesey, if we would give them a round of applause. Thank you, I appreciate that. So the next thing is, I guess you wonder, who is this guy? My name is Curtis Clemmons, and I'm running to be the sheriff here in Gwinnett County. Tell you a little bit about me. I'm a US Marine Corps veteran, I've been in Gwinnett County for thirty years in law enforcement. I started off at the Sheriff's Department, worked my way all the way up to sergeant, and did everything you could possibly conceive of in the Sheriff's Department, but I decided that I wanted to do more. And one of the things that I was not allowed to do at the Sheriff's Department was be involved in community outreach with the youth. And I began to look at the Gwinnett County Police Department, and I found out that they had programs where we could be involved with our youth. Everything from things from Brian Whiteside and Pat See Austin-Gass and husband Travis, we did the basketball league, we did several different things trying to reach out to other communities and bringing youth and the adults together so that we can reduce crime and give these youths some mentors. So as a sergeant, I left the Sheriff's Department, went over to the Police Department, had to start all the way back now at the very bottom as a rookie police officer, but in thirty years, five years in the Sheriff's Department, twenty-five years later I worked my way all the way up to become the first person to come and be appointed to Assistant Chief of Gwinnett County Police Department. Trust me, that was something that was not given to me, I earned every bit of it. And the reason I earned it is because I work hard, I believe in our youth, I believe in our future, but more importantly, I'm a man of faith. Without my faith, I have nothing. And it was on that faith that I made Gwinnett County my home. It was on that faith that I had two children and raised them here in Gwinnett County. One attended North Gwinnett High School, and my daughter graduated from Pecula High School, and now she's well on her way to become a teacher at the University of West Georgia because of what she has seen in here in Gwinnett County schools. She now wants to touch the youth, much like I showed her when she was coming up. But what's important here is that we discuss the elephant in the room. And the elephant in the room is that there is a connection between education, overworked teachers, underpaid teachers sometimes, and crime. We have to address those issues. I think Mr. Dr. Wilbanks has done an excellent job over these past years, but as I was telling someone the other day, the Gwinnett County of thirty years ago when I made this my home is not the Gwinnett County of today. And it's time for us as parents, concerned citizens, and people living in our own communities to come together and bring about change. Again, I'm Curtis Clemmons, I'm running for sheriff, and I hope you'll pay attention to what you hear tonight, because what we do next is going to affect the next generation. Thank you.
You already heard from me, I spoke for my uncle, Thomas Livesey. My name is Dr. James Wilson. I'm the Bishop of Solid Ground Christian Ministries. I have a doctorate degree in theology and pastoral care. I went to Indiana University. I grew up in Muncie, Indiana, about four hours from him. No, he never had to chase me in his sheriff's department. You wouldn't believe it, because I'm married to a woman that can cook excellent, but I have a full scholarship in football and track. The only place I run now is to the kitchen table when my wife tells me it's time to eat. I share that with you for this. When I went to Indiana University on a full scholarship, I was reading on a fourth grade level. They pushed me through because I was athletic. I did not realize I was dyslexic until I got to college. It was the church that took me in and taught me how to read the way that I needed to know how to read. I grew up with so many people who they thought was uneducated, special needs, special ed classes, because they were misdiagnosed. Now I read a book a week because I love reading. I make sure my grandchildren and other children, the children in my, in the churches that I bishop over, that they have strong educational programs. I'm here today because not only to speak for my uncle and his heart, but I'm here to speak for churches that used to come together and make sure that after-school care was in their churches. You can, after school, the church would pick you up and bring you there and help you with your homework and feed you while the parents had to work. If you needed tutoring, if you needed anything, you can find it in the church. So my plan is that if hopefully, preferably, along with your prayers, if we can touch and agree that the churches will come together and make a commitment that we will be the church of yes to hear, that makes sure that the communities and their children went on and did the things that they needed to do. I'm on this panel to ask, to answer any questions that you may have concerning where does, where is the church involvement in that? Because it used to be a time that if your child did get in trouble, you can always call on the pastor, and sheriffs and judges would listen, because if they knew God, then they was on the right track. All that has changed, and we need to change it back. So I sat on this panel to represent someone that went through a system, an excellent system, that didn't understand me, but needed me on the football field, needed me on the track field, but didn't care that I was reading on a fourth grade level and spelled even worse. Now I write books and I can spell better than all of y'all. But I see it backwards, and I learned how to see it. And I believe a lot of that is what's wrong with our children today, that they're being misdiagnosed, that we really don't understand them. So while we're building the schools and while we're doing the things that we need to do, we really need to look into the heart of our youth. Because if someone understood me when I was a child and realized that I was always over the programs because I was afraid to read, so I always had to be in charge, and then I would go home and cry because I was angry with myself because I didn't know how to read. You want to know why your children are angry? Just ask them, and they will tell you. So I'm on this program, this panel, to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
I have some written questions here that we're going to address to the panel now. Some of the handwriting is a little bit difficult to read, but I'll look through my desk. First question I have, what will be done to attract young talent back to South Gwinnett? Is there something you, which you care to address?
I can try to answer that. I think what we're having, I don't know if I need a microphone.
You do.
But I think one thing we're trying to do is attract people to the area. Number one is by doing different programs. We're trying to do different programs, number one, where we are saying, come back to Gwinnett, do the issues that we, I think we started about to basically learn a skill, learn a trade, all those type of things, number one, to reach out to people, don't quit school because you need a high school diploma to move forward. So I think one thing is being very diverse in different things, like partnering with Home Depot and Lowe's to get people interested in different type of, I guess, environments. Thank you.
Why don't you go to the mic, so I can do this one. Can you just come here?
Sure. Um, I'll tell you a little story about myself and my family. Some years ago, anybody show up hands, remember the movie Smokey and the Bandit? Okay, y'all are old. Okay. Um, a little history about myself. Many years ago, I was just a wee kid, and my mom brought my brother and I to Pleasant Hill Road. For some of you who don't know, there's a scene in Smokey and the Bandit where Jerry B and Bert Runnles drive through, there's a crowd on either side, they swore to the end of the movie, there's a crowd on either side shaking hands, you know, clapping hands, you know, telling congratulations because they had, they had won the bet. Well, I was in that crowd of people with my brother and my mom, so we were extras in the movie Smokey and the Bandit. And so that was the beginning of the movie industry, I believe, being in Gwinnett County. And what you may not remember, and again, I'm going to tell a little bit about my age, is in my... is in my trips back and forth in Gwinnett County before I went to the Marines, there used to be two water towers. Show up hands, who remembers the two water towers over there that came to the movie by, absolutely, right? And those two water towers said, Gwinnett is great. And they're gone. We don't have those here anymore. And I think that became a theme for Gwinnett County, but we've lost it. And I think we need to develop a theme, we need to invite, you know, true businesses, we need to invite, uh, true, uh, economic and educational opportunities back to the area. We're doing good on some levels, because when I talk to most people, the first thing they say when I ask them, why did you move to Gwinnett County, is because of what? The Gwinnett County schools. And so, on some level, we're doing good, but we also have to bring in economic development, but we also have to develop our infrastructure. Part of the problem, I know they're working on it, you probably may have heard about the Amazon plant, that's going to be over there near Stone Mountain, Highway 78. That's a lot of people, and I know the county commissioners are working on, working on that infrastructure, but that creates jobs. But we also need, as I said before, we need other economic development, we need artificial intelligence, we need to bring in those jobs that bring in the people, that bring in the money, that will allow Gwinnett to continue to be the place that everyone wants to come. Thank you.
One of the things that's going on, and I see Eric back here from Snowville, uh, South Gwinnett High School, uh, has a, it's an academy school as well, and one of their programs is entrepreneurship, where you create various jobs, and, Eric, I don't really have the updated data on it, but any of you really want to talk, stand up Eric, where Eric might know who you are. Uh, but we have a partnership with the city, and Eric's been very contributing, but that , uh, partner, entrepreneurship program, uh, really teaches young people how you start a business. And obviously, many of them start, and there's a lot of businesses that are owned and making. But Eric, there's a lot of businesses that get started out of the high school's corporation with the city, uh, and they're still in business today, and many of them making, making a good living. That, that's one thing that I can contribute, economic development. I do know where those, a replica of those towers are. Discovery High School, which is a high school just in, you know, Rick, uh, we have what we call a discovery center there, it's a cooperation partnership with junior achievement. We send all of our, uh, help me out here, Dr. Patterson, we send all of our seventh and eighth graders there, or sixth and eighth graders, I'm sorry, uh, and the, the sixth grade, uh, they, uh, look at the entrepreneurship. The eighth graders, or seventh, we're seventh, eighth graders, uh, they go through what's called a finance park, uh, they deal with financial thing, how you go about doing the budgeting, uh, and it's off the grade spirit. Well, there's, there's storefronts in that discovery center there, and it has a replica of those two towers. Gwinnett is great, success lives here. And I will agree with you, we need to make that more a reality, and, uh, because quite frankly, uh, I think the things that has made this country great, I think the three institutions, I put the family, the church to the sign, that's obvious, but one of them is our form of government. Second one is how we do our business, that entrepreneurial spirit, uh, that we have. Uh, that's, uh, the second thing, and then the third thing is how we go about educating our children, the common schools or the public schools. And I think as we, both our schools develop those specialty programs that really address careers, I think, well, because when companies look to locate in an area, they, they want workforce, they want to make there's a workforce there that, that they can use to do their jobs. Thank you.
Well, I tend to have a sharing personality. When I met Ms. Lizzy, I couldn't believe that we had a gym like this, and I just wanted to go out and reach out to the community to let people get to react, react with them again. So I believe our leaders need to be more sharing with their networks. I believe if we're going to have major businesses like Amazon coming into our town, we should have accountability, maybe get them to sign up for summer internships for our students, have career fairs for our students, so that we know that, hey, on the weekends, we can connect you with these different companies, so that you can get some experience in there, because it'll help with college applications, it'll also help you with, um, learning exactly what you want to do with your future. So I believe that as a leader and with our other leaders, we need to share more, and that would definitely attract new talent.
We have quite a few here regarding the education, so that's the thrust of the evening. I'm going to just leave a couple of them together, and we can get more comments from that one. Why is Shiloh High School behind Brookwood and Harview? Where is the local boys club? That's one. What specifically is Gwinnett County Public Schools doing to address the well, underrepresentation of black students in the gifted and AP classes? How are the counselors being trained to help undocumented students in the Shiloh cluster? And what is being done to prevent distractions with the new bring your own cellphone policy? That's more at the school level, that's nothing we can address here, so pardon?
But, exactly, as a parent, I'm very concerned, because my, my sibling does not, is not allowed a telephone, so how are they being educated?
Okay. The right people are out there, so we'll get at it. And this is the last one I'll put in this group. The population of Shiloh Middle School continues to increase. Is there a plan to build another middle school, theme, or magnet school in the Shiloh cluster to help with the overcrowding and parents having to choose schools that allow permissive transfer? So, most of those are going to go to me. Please, one take.
There are several questions there, several points, so let me address, maybe the one that was mentioned first or near the first, why is Shiloh behind Brookwood? I'm not sure that Shiloh is behind Brookwood. Now, if you want to just look at pure academic achievement, that's probably, probably a fair statement, but, but I do know that Shiloh High School has a lot of great programs. First of all, Shiloh High School had our first ROTC program, and that program still exists today, we have a number of students that go from there to the military. Uh, and, but more importantly, it teaches the students that go through that program leadership and discipline, and I think that, uh, is one of the true benefits of a junior ROTC program. Uh, Shiloh has, again, I don't want to just repeat myself, but it has a international baccalaureate program, and that is as high in academic preparation as you can get, it's a, it's a program that requires additional staff, we have to provide additional staff there. And just on and on, back to the, uh, some of the other issues that we mentioned, uh, we, uh, we look at enrollment, we keep a, uh, very accurate records on enrollment, uh, I have somewhere in that folder of how many, uh, students that are available in Shiloh, how many available in South. The two high schools in the area south of, uh, 78. Uh, and the area, as you know, hasn't, hasn't grown as much as other areas of the county, and for ten years, from two thousand, actually from about ninety-eight through two thousand nine, we were growing. Your school system was growing, anywhere from five to seven thousand students a year over the previous year. And obviously, we have to build, uh, uh, schools to accommodate where that, where that growth is. If Shiloh High School or Shiloh Middle School becomes overcrowded, then we obviously will address that issue, either through addition or through a, another school, whichever one that, uh, is, is the most beneficial. Uh, same thing would be for elementary schools, but we have, it's sort of, what we refer to as sort of flat, uh, one year, there may be a few students more than the last year, the next year could be a few less. Uh, speaking of schools, we have a principal here of Shiloh Middle School, one of the high, actually a very high-performing elementary school. Stand up, where everybody knows who you are, and am I correct on enrollment, has you enrolled pretty well?
Yes, um, in fact, this is my ninth year as principal there. We've had five homerooms in every grade level for all nine years. One, once or twice, we've had four on one grade level, and in our cluster, all of the elementary schools are projected to drop just a little bit next year. My school's going to go up by about twenty or thirty kids, but the rest of them are dropping by about twenty or thirty. So, um, I know Mr. Will Banks, he can't know every cluster of data, I know it because I live in every day, but, um, our, our projection's been pretty, pretty much the same, uh, we've been staying right about the same since I've been here for the nine years.
Dr. Doll, I think the high school you have somewhere in the neighborhood of about two hundred, capacity of about two hundred more students, uh, is that correct?
Good evening, everyone. Yes, that is correct. Uh, when I came in, so I've been a principal at Shiloh for five years, and the highest that we've seen has been a little over twenty-four hundred students. Next year, we're actually projected to be ten less than what we were last year, which is going to put us at twenty-one ninety. So if that gives you over five years, just an idea of the decrease in the enrollment in the students, that's kind of what we've seen and are seeing in the cluster.
Now, things can change. Uh, I'll give you an example, I'll take the Metta Creek Cluster. Uh, we saw growth in that cluster for six consecutive years, pretty high growth, okay? Uh, and at one time, uh, we, if you combine all the students together, uh, there in that cluster, well, we have Tommy Welch here, who's principal of Metta Creek. Over the summer, without any reason that we really know of, we lost a thousand students. Actually, Dr. Clemmons, a few, over a thousand, few other students out of that cluster. Uh, and so, enrollment does fluctuate in some clusters, so we, we have some clusters that continue to grow, uh, as we see in the eastern part of county, that's why we've got to build a new high school there. I think Mill Creek is probably around a thousand, eleven hundred students over capacity. So we're, we're building a new high school there. So we're committed, folks, to, uh, keep up with, uh, the growth. You've been very good in the Shiloh area, has always, uh, listen, let me make sure you heard me. The Shiloh area has always supported the sales taxation, uh, the Splotch, that's really is a capital program. You've always been good to support the bond, uh, dual bond, general obligation bond, uh, where we address, uh, needs. Matter of fact, I think at Shiloh High School, you just got your track replaced last year. And also allows us to make some of the renovations in the schools as we add, as we add new programs, such as at, at Shiloh. There had to be some modification in the pharmacy program, uh, and we try to provide for that, and, but we're committed, uh, folks, I just want you to know, we're committed to making sure that the education level of, uh, here in this area, promised land explicitly, uh, is as good as it is anywhere. And I will tell you, you don't have to go a long way to find a better elementary school than Shiloh Elementary School. I say that without, uh, any qualifications. Shiloh Middle School, I think we're seeing, beginning to see that take off a little bit. There's been some, uh, issues there in the past year or two, but I think we, the principal there now is really getting that school squared away, and I think you're going to see a different result in, in a few years. Yes, sir?
Uh, one other thing I want to bring your attention is the amount of money that the district has put into my school and refurbishing it over the last four or five years, we've pretty much had a new school. New carpets, new paint inside and out, new roof, heating and air conditioning, they're coming out tomorrow to replace our anticon system. Everything that, that you could think of has been replaced in our school, and when they come in, they stay on the doors, they stay in the doors, I mean, there's like two hundred doors in the school, so it's a huge deal, carpets, everything has been replaced, it's like a brand new school again, so I appreciate that, and just to let, let you guys all know that they are putting money in to our schools as well.
And more of our relevant and newer schools, as we mentioned earlier, the Anderson Lives the School, you certainly don't think we're going to let something go wrong at the Anderson Lives the School, do you, Mr. Lives?
I would like to ask about the Turner School.
Pardon?
Well, Turner School, we don't need that, but when, when we get a, a medicine, we need a medicine here, and at the end of county, and we also need a library at the end of county. This end of county has three sections, you got the east side of Gwinnett, the south side of Gwinnett, you got the south, this side of Gwinnett.
I'm going to, uh, I don't want to put anybody on the spot, but the library, you'll have to talk to Ms. Fosky, one of the commissioners. You can't hide from us, no. Listen, she's doing a, doing a great job in representing her district extremely well, but I do want you to know that we have school buses that are fixed as mobile libraries, and they go around in communities. Uh, they do that even in the summer, students can get books, they check books out, uh, they're even giving books, age-appropriate books, and we, we try to do that for the parents too, that maybe have younger siblings that haven't even started the school yet, where the parents can read to the children to help, uh, make sure that they're prepared for kindergarten. But, anyway, I, I didn't mean to call on names or whatever gets you involved in this, but you all have provided some great information, and I appreciate that. But, Mr. Lizzy, uh, we, we're going to watch the numbers, and if Shiloh Middle School, uh, still has some room, or is this about full, we are looking to, uh, if, if it needs it, we're looking to add maybe one to that, or if it justifies a middle school, we would certainly look at that, okay? That's all I can tell. Yes?
Good evening, Dr. Will Banks. Good evening, everybody. My name is John Mooy, I'm a candidate for the third district here, and I'm a resident of Snowville. I want to thank you all so much, Charlie, for coming, Dr. Will Banks. Is this working? Is it now working? Do you have a service?
No, I'm off.
First of all, thank you all so much for coming out this evening, this is wonderful information, and I certainly commend everybody. I wanted to thank Dr. Will Banks, really, for a great job here in Gwinnett, I live here in Snowville, my kid graduated from Greatson High School, and I wanted to talk to Dr. Will Banks about literacy, so I'm actually the policy director for the Urban League in Atlanta, and we've been working aggressively on literacy. Uh, there's a huge percentage of our children who can't read on third grade level, so there's a bill right now, HB four fourteen, we were at the state cabinet this week, actually on Monday, had a great, with the chairman of the education committee, see if we can get this bill passed. Uh, when you take a look at literacy rates, particularly here in Gwinnett, although we have a pretty good rate, but how, how can we get those literacy, literacy rates up for our children? I'm looking at your information on that, because I think there is very correlation between education and crime. I think the gentleman mentioned that in terms of about fourth grade readers, right? But if we can get our kids to read by third grade, we can get those numbers up, you know, there's a great chance that they're going to go up to graduate. And so, we're really, I'm really supporting this effort here, not only in our community but statewide, and I wanted Dr. Will Banks to talk about how to get the literacy rates up for our children. Thank you.
Literacy, obviously, is important, uh, we, we've said for years, if a student isn't reading, uh, by the third grade, uh, you know, you learn to read and then you read to learn, uh, so if you can't read, your learning is greatly impaired, and, uh, probably, uh, there are eleven or twelve negatives that go along with students that either drop out or whatever, many of them have become, well, a statistic, as, as we've heard. that go along with students that either drop out or whatever, many of them become, well, a statistic as we've heard here. But we are trying to do some things to address that early, what we call the early learning years, those are very important years. And as you know, we get no funding for pre-kindergarten. But we are trying to do some things on our own that will obviously bring the parent and the child into school once a week, I believe, to where they can be better prepared for kindergarten. We do have a challenge. Fifty-two percent of the students in the county show up for kindergarten, not ready for kindergarten, not ready for that according to the kindergarten, the curriculum or the kindergarten flags. So that's a big load, and we're really trying to address that. But we obviously need more help, and there's an effort underway to get the whole community. I think I will commit, I had a meeting with the commission chair, Ms. Nash, one day this week, I think it may have been yesterday. And she is really looking at, she will deliver the state of the county address very shortly here. And I think she will make an appeal in that for the community to really get more concern about the literacy efforts. And I think what we say and what we really advocate, it doesn't cost money for parents to read to their kids. It really doesn't, but it makes a huge difference when that child comes to school. They have some of the basic skills that they need when they enter school. Literacy is an issue. It's an issue for the nation, and it's certainly an issue for us here in Gwinnett County. We've got to do something to deal with that.
Mike Chek, excuse me, real quick, I have to comment on that. My name is Derek Wilson. I'm also running for county commissioner, district three. You just made a comment, said it costs, it doesn't cost money for parents to read. You just said literacy is a problem. Literacy is not a problem, illiteracy is not a problem just for the kids. It's a cycle. If the parents have poor education and can't read, then how are they going to read to their kids? That's where the school district comes in with early childhood education or pre-ken. So my question is, could you come back and explain what is the district is doing trying to get funding from the county or the state to provide early childhood education and not continue to put it on the parents who are probably single parents, working multiple jobs, and making comments as reading is not, it doesn't cost money? Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. I really do think we, we're all aware that there is an issue with literacy for the kids. But as I mentioned earlier, we get no funding to provide anything below kindergarten except for identified or specially educated children, okay? We do get some money for them. And we do serve those kids. But we are in absence of not getting additional dollars to do that. And we, we asked this year for the legislature to, if they would fund pre-ken, we would try to offer that where we could. And number one, we don't have room in some schools for that, but we would find a way to do that if funding comes. That's a legislative problem. And, but short of that, we're continuing, again, to try to do some things. Most every title one school, that's what's referred to as a parent coordinator, and they try to identify the kids that really need to have some type of formal training and, or some, it's called play to learn. We're expanding that. I think every title one school will have a play to learn program by the end of this year. And they're working on adding to those numbers. That's how we're trying to address them. But those things do cost money, and you know, as much as you, as much as we know it needs to be done, we can't do it without, without money, but we're doing what we can. I understand the problem.
Dr. Livesey, I just want just to answer Dr. Livesey directly. So what we found out is that we can address this problem. And our bill that we have at the state legislature, we only need twenty-seven million dollars to go to one hundred fifty-five classrooms. We have about five fourths, that was eight hundred five girls in our state who don't have access to kindergarten. That's it. And for twenty-seven million dollars, we can build one hundred and five, one hundred fifty-five classrooms. So I'm working on that every day. I'm working that aggressively. And talking to the chairman of the education committee and on the center side as we speak right now. So I want to thank you again, Dr. Livesey. I certainly look forward to working with you to make this happen to get education for all of our children here in Gwinnett and across the state. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Amina Malik. I am the president of a new organization in the community, General Athletics Club. Excuse me, I'm a little nervous. It's a nonprofit organization for the youth in this Shallow area. Myself and a lot of other families have had children in the community in the sports area. And this past year, we have come together in the community and realized that our children need more than just the sports aspect. So I personally kind of spearheaded, I would say, I don't want to say campaign, but spearheaded the sentiment of a lot of families when it comes to our children and the needs of our young men particularly in this community that need something to do as far as related steel trades and education, extending education to the tutoring area, things of that nature. So we developed this program in the area, and our mission is to create challenges in the community utilizing the sport as a tool to reach the youth by offering a mentorship program, robotics program, and trade steel program. So what advice can you give GAC in gaining the support of the Gwinnett County school system and the advancement of this program?
Can you repeat that question?
What advice can you give a new program such as GAC, General Athletics Club, in gaining the support of the Gwinnett County school system and the advancement of a program such as this?
First of all, I heard you mention robotics. I think every one of our elementary schools has what's referred to as robotics club. And I would suggest that you make contact with the principal in the area that you really want to identify and work with, whether it be all of them or two or three. And I think they can, they generally are very receptive to partnerships with outside agencies or whatever. But as you well know, robotics is something that really engages kids. And it makes learning math and science and even language arts much easier if they're committed to doing those things, and they obviously have to do that. It's what we call student engagement and academics, but over themes that they enjoy doing.
I want to address the issue we were talking about earlier. You talked about the reading bus that will come into areas. I remember as a young child seeing the commercials for that on TV. The reading bus typically comes into underprivileged neighborhoods. The problem, and I think it's a great idea, but the problem with the reading bus is that when kids need to go to the library, the bus is not always going to be there. And I think it gets right back to the point that Mr. Livesey and others have been talking about is they need a library down on this end that is going to be there, whether that bus is there or not. They need a library that's going to be there in the community that can become a hub for the kids to come and learn. If you don't put that hub there for them to learn, you're leaving the kids at a disadvantage. And one of the things that I've learned being in the administrative positions, assistant police and other positions of administrative positions, you have to plan ahead. And I understand that there is a fluctuation in the student count at the different schools. However, I believe that it's called the twenty forty plan with Gwinnett County. And I think the last count for Gwinnett County as far as population, we were at about nine hundred and twenty-five thousand. And we are expected by twenty forty to be about one point three million people in Gwinnett County. And so you have to anticipate that growth. And it seems like we're just kind of stagnant at this point. We're not anticipating growth. So to anticipate that growth, we need to build a middle school. We need to build a high school. We need to have that library that will then support that middle school and support that high school. When I told teachers that I met with over the county, throughout the county, that I was going to give this program, my phone never stopped ringing. I talked to so many teachers, and they had so many things to talk to me about and tell me about the problems and the issues that they're facing. And everything from strategic waivers, where they have so many kids in the class that they really can't teach the way that they want to, and how the strategic waivers are being misused, and the teachers are overloaded in the classrooms. And so to help alleviate that, we need to build, again, the middle school, the high school, to have those libraries for kids to go study and learn. We need to bring and invite more teachers into Gwinnett County. But we have to have the facilities, the buildings, again, infrastructure to be able to support that and support our children on this end of the county. And I think, you know, we, again, it's that elephant in the room. We can sit here all day long, but there is a definite distinction between the resources and the teachers. Not good or bad teachers. I adore teachers. I think they're some of the best people in the world. But what is provided to the teachers at St. Brookwood High School is vastly different from what you can get at Shallow High School or somewhere else. And that, again, is the elephant in the room. And we, Gwinnett County school is a good school system, but it doesn't mean that it can't improve. We have to improve. We have to provide for our children. And again, if you're, if you're in any administrative role, you have to look into the future and plan for the future. And if we anticipate the growth, I promise you, those thousand students are going to come back. And then some. You're going to have more. So we need to look at that. And just like I said, the school bus program, great program, but typically that is for underprivileged students. You need to have a library right here where they can go and study and learn at any time. Thank you.
I will have to react to one of the things that probably no organization does any more long-term planning than we do. And when we, we know when growth is coming, we know when growth is not, air is not growing. We know when the air is losing. And we try to make sure that, and I will building program to account for that. Now, obviously, as you know, it takes money to build a school. And you just can't up and do that. It takes money for staff and for faculty. I've never said tonight, we're perfect. We are a good school district. We can get better, and we're trying to get better. We try to get better every day. So don't sell us short on that. And we can tell you what the enrollment for schools are, probably five years out, within a reasonable range. That's every student. And we will continue to do that because that's our job, that's what we have to do. I have two other questions here that says, what is your stance on policy four sixteen and policy four three four that bans undocumented students from the top five universities? As you know, I have no control over the universities and that. I do regret the fact that some, six, eight years ago, we had two senators, Saxby Shambly and Johnny Isaacson. And they had the integration problem pretty well figured out. It sort of went haywire, and nothing's been done about it since. And I certainly regret that that hasn't been done, but I don't know when it will be done. I'm sure it will be one day. But I do know, one of the reasons since that issue came up, one of the reasons, I think, we lost a thousand students over the summer is because of the rhetoric and whatever the news about the immigration issues. And in that area, you were having two or three families living in the same house, which is not permissible, but they do it. But anyway, those are the kinds of things that we face with. But hear me, and hear me well when I tell you, when your enrollment in this area justifies an elementary, a middle, or even another high school, we'll build them, okay? Until that happens, however, we, what we will try to do is make sure, if we're doing it at Shallow. And I just want to say again, I think Dr. Doll and her people are doing a good job there. They're not perfect. Nobody is. But I do think there's a plan there to really develop some programs that's different than they are now. They already have some very good, very different, if you haven't been in there. I would just invite some of these people who visit you, Dr. Doll, to really see some of the things that are going on at that high school that I think you'll be very proud of and very surprised about. This other question is, what proactive approaches is the school system acting to? Two things. Number one, I didn't bring my glasses tonight, educators, the game problem. Listen, if there are people living in your area, and I would assume there is, there are some gangs or wannabe gangs. I'll just point to my police friends over here. Is that correct? No. They're either gang or wannabes. And, but our police do a great job in identifying them, but the problem's not getting better. There are more of them. They have different plans. And quite frankly, if they are of school age, they attend school. However, we, we have very few what are called game-related incidents in schools by game members. And we know who they are. The county police know who they are, and we have access to that. But games are a problem. I know the governor just changed one of his three priorities this year is games. And I know friends here or those like that. Folks, I'll just recommit to you again, we're committed to providing you the best possible education we can. We can't do it by ourselves, and I don't want to argue with you on what parents can and can't do, but I do know the first teacher should be who? Parents. And if you can't read, then turn to, most homes have a TV. Turn to a TV program that has some educational bag in terms of reading, and let that kid watch that. But I do think the school and parents working together, we can provide a better education for kids than we're able to do today. Thank you.
One of my favorite movies is Still the Dreams, if y'all remember that. So I would just say this, if you build it, they'll come. If you build it, they'll come. The reason people are leaving is because they're attracted to what other people have. And then what happens is, then they become overpopulated, so now you've got to build more there. So the answer in how many people are in one area, the answer is why are people leaving this area? And the reason they're leaving this area, because we don't have what that area has. So if we build it, they will come back. It will level off, and everybody will be happy. If you build it, they'll come. If you build it, our children will be better. But until it's built. We have wonderful churches with wonderful classrooms. We have saved teachers that set in our pews. Encourage your churches to start literacy programs. Encourage your churches to help teach our children, teachers. Stop being ushers and start being teachers in your churches. We even have churches with libraries. Use them. I just left the church. They had a library, and that was the most empty room in the whole church because everybody was in the gym. So let's be honest with each other. We have what we need if we come together as a community to do it. You've got teachers that're sitting right next to you that goes to church with you every Sunday. If they surrender their gifts to their church, if you bring your youth back to church, and we can have literacy programs there until they build it and they'll come. So I would encourage you to tell your churches to reevaluate their mission plan. So, I would encourage you to tell your churches to, to, um, reevaluate their mission plans as it comes to their youth. To start doing more educational things with our youth in our churches. Giving your gift talents and abilities in that regards within your church. And I promise you, you'll see a change because whenever God is involved, it can't fail. Thank you.
Just before we get started, are there any other officials here that are running for public office? Would like to have you stand and we will acknowledge you towards the end of the program. We just want to see where you are right now. Anyone that's running? We'll give you moments to come up front and then identify yourselves at the end of our question and answer session.
All right, thank you. And, uh, I just want to sort of piggyback some things that Curtis said about libraries. I'm sixty-two years old and my wife is sixty-one years old. But I've known my wife since nineteen sixty-three. We've been married forty-three years. And we raised in Gary, Indiana. And a library was a sanctuary. Uh, my wife basically did tea parties. We did reading. We did, uh, writing in those libraries. A library is very important, especially in the minority community because sometimes it's a safe, safe haven for a lot of people. If you don't have daycare, they can drop people off. They read there. They do very, uh, important things. So, I think it's important that you do have your own library because it's a place of exploration where you can read, feel, uh, safe and experience things that you never can experience. And I think Marlene is here and I know she's going to work, uh, work toward that. But I also think, uh, number one is that we have to sort of think out the box. Uh, what we're doing in the solicitor's office, we have contacted Curtis Clemmons and Paty Austin Gasson, who's running for DA. We've contacted Total Learning Concepts. That is a tutoring agency in Parkview Cluster. My son, uh, went to, my granddaughter went to. And I can tell you, my son, when he was in high school, we said he wasn't really highly motivated. But he was able to go there and be tutored and he was about twenty points, uh, from a perfect SAT. And the whole point about that is the concept that they taught him how to study, how to take the test differed and probably somebody just reading a book. So, we need those type of places and we're moving forward to partnership with them. Curtis has already made the call. Paty is involved in that. Because I know as a minority supposedly, uh, raised in Gary, Indiana, that I had a lot of advantages that people didn't have. I had two parents, both of them were teachers. My father was in the military. My grandfather was an air raid warden. So, there's a lot of things that I see that need to be done. I think we need to work as a community to think ahead, that everybody's not going to go to college. That's why we partnership with, uh, Home Depot. And there's a question here. It says, "Why do, what are your thoughts about the high and increasing rate of black men and women being incarcerated?" And that's something I've always thought about because number one, uh, just like our pastor from, um, IU, Indiana University of Purdue, usually are rivals. I was able to walk on to Purdue as a football player in grand track, sixty-yard champion, two-hundred-yard, one-hundred-yard. We had so many advantages. I mean, why do people of a black race become incarcerated more? Because historically, when you talk about two hundred years ago, people didn't have the educational environment. And one thing Dr. Wilbanks makes a good point of is that literacy, and this may make a comment, but literacy starts in the home. When I was a police officer in Gary, Indiana, I would go in people's homes. This was in the eighties and nineties. They didn't even have a newspaper. They didn't have a book. So, the first duty of a parent is to read to your child and educate your child. Now, teachers have a duty also. Each and every year, since I was seven years old, I did my father's planning. And at the end of semester, parents would ask, "Why didn't my child graduate in seventh grade?" My father's word was, "Don't you know? You missed five parent-teacher conferences. You missed another parent-teacher conference when I told you to come." We had PTA meetings. You didn't come. So, I'm not demonizing anybody. I'm just saying is that we have to start being very dutiful. Soon as a child is born, we have to start reading to a child. We have to do little things with the child. And one of the points in my bill to legalize marijuana is ten percent goes to pre-K. Now, I understand everybody's not going to have that time to read, learn, or do math with their child. So, the doctor said, "Pre-K is very important." And I think some people haven't had pre-K. They can't afford pre-K. A lot of minorities, people don't have the money. So, that's why you have a lot of people incarcerated because you don't have the education. And statistically, we have ninety percent of people who get convicted don't have a high school to go on. So, what our agency is doing is we want to have tutors. We want to do programs to prevent those issues. And we want that bill to be passed, so ten percent goes to pre-K. So, when someone says, "I can't afford pre-K. I can't afford daycare," that ten percent, because Colorado made a billion dollars, ten percent goes to providing each and every person who can't afford that can drop their child off. And that helps literacy because you have to remember, uh, I think by the fourth grade in Gwinnett, people are doing pre-algebra, uh, fifth grade. So, these are things that are important. And why do minorities get behind? Because two hundred years ago, you didn't, you couldn't go to school. Like Mr. Lizzie said, you had torn books. So, when you don't have the advantages of other people, that's why you become incarcerated because you don't have a job, you don't have the skills to make it a society. Thank you very much.
The evening is fast running away from us and we have lots of questions. So, if you have a burning question, I'll bring the mic to you so you can address the pen. Okay, go ahead.
Um, hi. My name is Christina Robertson and I'm not running for anything and I don't have any children in the school that graduated and gone. Just want to make that clear. Um, my question is for Mr. Whiteside and Mr. Clemmons and, um, maybe Mr. Wilbanks. How do you combat the ever-increasing crime in our area? How can we get more resources for the police and first responders? And I know that this mostly has been education, but I've been here twenty-two years. I've been robbed three times. I get stuck in my face in traffic here in Centerville. Um, it's horrible. And nobody has said anything about what they're going to do to help make the crime better while the schools are increasing and Amazon's coming and it's just going to get worse. So, is anybody going to do anything to address the crime here in Centerville?
Just real short, so Curtis can talk about that because... Number one, the, uh, point about preventing crime is good judges. And we have a lot of people here, Ms. Kirk, BT Partners here, I think everyone up at Judge, Crystal Kirk. The big thing is the judges. Like I told you people before, we recommend, when people have guns, we get cases where you have two seventeen-year-olds, sixteen-year-olds, uh, coming in a car, seventeen-year-old in a car. They're, they're considered a daughter seventeen. They're driving up and down seventy-eight highway. I recommend they do six months in jail. That's what I recommend as the Solicitor General. I did fifteen years of the police office, twenty-three years in attorney. The judges, they say, "No, I'm going to give them probation." You do a terrible thing with a young man. I raised two boys when you don't punish them. Well, this is my other point, that if you're going to stop crime, you're going to have to punish them. Put them in jail. And then what will happen, most likely, because we do programs, a lot of them aren't going to commit those felonies, but you have to stop them. And to be controversial, as we know, Danny Porter was a district attorney. He recommended that a young man be put in jail, that he not do probation. Juvenile judge gave probation. He killed a police officer. So, the first way we stop crime is we have to be tough with violent crimes. But we need the support of the judges to put people in jail because you do a horrible thing with a young man when you don't punish him. Thank you.
Someone else has a question?
Yes, there's one more question.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Constance Folsom. I am, I'm a special education teacher. And I will applaud you ladies for standing up for special ed. We need a lot of help in special ed at state, uh, local and national level. But my announcement is that, um, we're, we're planting a church on Highway one twenty-four where we're going to start working with, um, special needs students and any student, uh, who's difficult to read. So, if you're interested or if you know some children that need that help, please send me out there. Thank you.
I want to address her issue right here real quick. Um, um, I can, I can tell you something that affected me deeply is, uh, Mr. Whiteside briefly talked about it. Um, we lost a, a young officer who had just turned thirty years old, Antoine Tomlee. Um, awesome young man, great family, and he came all the way from California to Gwinnett because he heard such good things about Gwinnett to become a Gwinnett County Police Officer. So, when we lost him, that shook our department. It shook me personally. Um, but I will tell you this, uh, I don't know if you're familiar with it, but, uh, Gwinnett County Police Department just opened up the sixth precinct. It's called Bay Creek Precinct over by the Grace and Loverville area in order to address the various concerns that you have brought up. Uh, we are, uh, I say we, I still have the police mindset that is still there, but I was tired as assistant chief back in, in March of last year. However, but they are contingent to recruit. Uh, I strongly encourage you, if you have any concerns, each precinct has a crime prevention officer, okay? Reach out to your precinct commanders. Go talk to them. They are accessible. They want to hear from you. Trust me, I was there. I've been a precinct commander and I've been, again, assistant chief. So, I understand they do want to hear from you. If we don't hear from the citizens, the assumption is nothing's wrong. So, if you don't come to the precinct, if you don't pick up the phone and call, we think everything's okay. And if you want, uh, we tell people all the time, if you want to have patrols stepped up in your area, all it takes is a phone call and say, "Hey, I would like officers to step up patrol in this area." We call the COAP, which means check often as possible. And so, when people just call the precinct commander and ask for that, uh, you can make that happen and because we want you to feel safe. Gwinnett, despite the fact that we don't have water tiles, Gwinnett is still the right place to live, okay? And then success does live here. And with, with Gwinnett County Police Department, the Sheriff's Department, we want you to feel safe and comfortable in your home and we're going to continue down that road. Uh, we have to put, you know, it, it, we break it very down, very simple. We have to put the bad guys behind bars. And that's the tough thing that people don't want to do. But we also have to have those alternative programs. And, but when you look at Gwinnett County, not just Gwinnett County, but the state of Georgia as a whole, right now, last census in Georgia, there were ten point six million people in Georgia. Do you know how many are on probation, parole, are in the criminal justice system? Forty percent. Forty percent. I encourage you, when you leave here, go Google it. Georgia has the most people in the entire United States incarcerated are in the criminal justice system. We are number one. And that's not anything to be proud of, okay? And there's a statistically speaking, based on those numbers here for Georgia, one in every eighteen people are either on probation, parole, or awaiting their court date. So, if you look around, there's probably somebody in here who's in that particular situation. So, it is not a, a statistic to be proud of, but I know from having served here in this county for thirty years, your safety is important, not only with the police department, but also with the sheriff's department. We want you to feel safe. You are safe. And, and I am so sorry that you've had some unfortunate incidents that have happened to you, but I still believe to the core of my being that Gwinnett County is a great place to live and it will continue to be. And they are there for you and I just ask that you please make contact with your local precinct commander, all right?
We have a question here. If they want to, you can go first.
I want to kind of piggyback off of your statement and I think my question kind of ties into education and, um, police work or community police work. Does the, is there any type of program for the schools, for the youth? Because I'm a firm believer, prevention starts with the youth.
Yes.
So, before we get to the point of their, you know, uh, being the numbers of the criminals and the actions in the community, what are the, what are, where is the connection with the school system, our youth? And, and the law, like where is the connection? Are you in the schools? Are, are we educating our youth? Are we, are we going to the elementary schools? Not waiting to them for them to get to high school and start trying to see, go to alternative school out on, on the high hill road? Where's the prevention at early?
Well, I, I can tell you this, having been there, uh, I, I can't speak for the sheriff's department. I can't speak for the police department. They do have a crime prevention officers at every precinct and officers are encouraged and they actually do, uh, get out and volunteer at local schools as mentors. Um, I have been a, I had been a mentor in Gwinnett County Public School System for almost sixteen years. Uh, year after year, uh, being a sign of the young mentee. And I can tell you what happens when you have a, a child that doesn't have a father in their life or mom is working two or three jobs because she's just trying to survive. And so, she's not really there to raise her child. One of the things that I did with some of the young men, and I took them as a mentor, and this is back in the days, not too long ago, when the Braves stadium was in downtown Atlanta. And I took them to a Braves game. And these young men and women had never left the confines, actually of this area, the Centerville area. They had never left the confines. They were born here, born at Eastside Hospital, born here, go to school here, have never been on vacation, have never left the confines. The most they had known was go to the English or the program. And we took them to a Braves game. And there's an old saying, when you see somebody thinking, you see like the gears, you know, moving in their head. And that, that's what we saw because we, we showed them that not only do they have options, but there are opportunities. And this is not about me, but myself personally, I, I did what I could do with the Gwinnett County School Board Mentor Program. But then I got involved at the Gift Center. And I'll notice that, you know, the, the, Gwinnett Intervention, uh, Program, they have two. We have East and Gift West. And our volunteers and mentors there. And we did everything from teaching young girls and young boys, simple stuff like how to tie a top that they're not getting taught at home, or what to take if they're going to go on a job interview. And it starts with little stuff like that. And we provide that stability for some, some of these youth. And so, that evolved into me being a part of a program called LEEDs, which is law enforcement agencies assisting in the development of students. And we do everything from mentor to this past Christmas, we, we took Christmas gifts for not only the children, but also for the mothers. We provide those for them. And we went out to the Extended State Hotels off of Highway seventy-eight, the In-Town Suites and the Gwinnett Inn, two drive down seventy-eight across from the Krispy Kreme. You know exactly what I'm talking about. And so, we provide that. So, we do the mentorships. It is out there. Gwinnett County Police does offer that program, do the crime prevention program. And again, there are so many resources available to you and to families if you just reach out. And that's why I can ask you to please contact your precinct commander and they can give you a whole list of all the, the resources that is available to you and get officers into the school. And just like I did and I volunteered to become part of Gwinnett County School Board Mentor Program, we got officers who are ready to do it because they understand that the youth are the future. Thank you.
I'm Roger Maravilla, City Councilman for a bit over four years in San Antonio. And during that time, I was working on my own business and I substituted taught for almost three years. Most in the South Carolina area, taught at Meadow Creek, uh, Shiloh, most of the schools and others. And I'm glad to hear there's things going on that are positive for those schools. But I'm also excited about to hear some of the real issues going on in those schools that I've been in there and seen it. Uh, for example, most of the time in Shiloh, I was separating fights. That's what I was doing most of the time when I was supposed to be teaching. But I want to know what's being done to empower the teacher in the classroom because they're the ones really, day to day, and some of them are afraid to speak up because pay and the stuff that goes on in the administration versus the classroom level. because pay and the stuff that goes on in the administration versus the classroom level. So I want to know what's being done to empower the teacher in the classroom.
One of the things that I know frustrates teachers the most is obviously disruptions in the classroom. You can't teach if the classroom is not, that's a given. We do have police officers in high schools and middle schools. We try to make sure that they're there to prevent real serious things happening. But more important, or just as important, I should say, is the fact that they try to connect with the students. They do teach classes from time to time on various things. They obviously hold some professional development for the teachers to really be able to identify gang work, markings, those kinds of things. And then again, once a student is identified, and as I said, as Curtis mentioned, the police department, generally their gang unit, they have pretty good identification of where the gang members in county are. That is shared with us, and if they obviously are school lads and go to school, we know who they are and they are supervised. In terms of what are we doing for the teachers? First of all, I think the best possible classroom management is a great, relevant, rigorous, and engaging instructors. Now, if you provide that and students are disruptive, that obviously cuts down on effectiveness. But I think that's the first thing we have to do. But we spend a lot of time trying to help teachers be able to do what we refer as classroom management. How do you de-escalate situations? I think all of us, actually, Mr. Lizzy may have a few years on me, but I've been around for more than two years, you can tell by looking at me. Every school I've ever been in, there's fighting goes on. But it does need to be under control. And I think we're, we take measures to make sure that that happens. And not only that, but just involve the parents with that. We have to do that, and our SROs are really working with those students that tend to be disruptive whenever there's, it gets beyond what the principal office is able to do. We don't want to tolerate disruption in our schools. So we just can't do that. As you, everybody in this room's been to school. Everybody in this room's been to school probably at least 12 years, some 14, some 16, some maybe more. If you work at a job that many years, you think you're pretty well-known, know it, an expert. But I'm here to tell you, schools change, students change, as demographics change, and the strategies and techniques, the methods that we have to use are very different today. And one of the things that is one of the greatest challenges for us today is this thing that most of us carry around. I sort of wish we could go back to this. Now, the script phone. It's not nearly as easy to text with and whatever. We have a tremendous number of threats on social media. Most of them all are not valid. But this is a day and age, listen, I come from a time and era, if you've got a bomb threat by telephone, you just sort of look around and make sure nobody has heard it. You put the phone back there, because nothing was going to happen. You would be more than crazy to do that today. You just couldn't do it today, it's a totally different day. So the challenges are immense, but I do believe we're trying to address those in the best possible way. Curtis mentioned the mentoring program, a great program that we started, that we now have three. We have one for African-American males, we have one for Hispanics, and we have one African-American females. And thank you for being that mentor. It makes a huge difference. And I think, as you heard him talk about the car on the ballgame, I will bet you got some joy out of that too, just seeing what you did for those kids. So thank you for that and whatever. And those are the kind of things that we're doing. Again, check out Shiloh Middle, check out Shiloh High School. There are different schools today that they've built. And I think they're improving those. My hat's off to Dr. Dollar and their staff in doing that, as well as the new, we have a new principal there, Shiloh Middle School. Thank you.
Alright, and this is another question, Janine told me to read it because someone asked this question. But it says, Shiloh Middle School does not have an auditorium, and the gym is not able to house one grade level comfortably. This is true, I actually taught band a couple of days and I have 38 students in class, which is a lot to handle for one teacher. When will the middle school have an area that can house the students for an assembly without having to use the high school as is being done at this time by anonymous person?
Sure, I didn't hear that last question.
Oh. So what are they going to have, basically an auditorium or what, making up to youths? Because they're, at this time, they're using students for an assembly? Yeah, for an assembly without having the high school as being used, so the high school's being used at this time. So they want an assembly type and gym area. It's middle school, yeah?
I'm not aware that any of the middle schools have an auditorium. The high schools have auditoriums, theaters, whichever we call them. I don't know, but I won't say we won't ever put an auditorium there. But as you know, when you build a school, a high school today costs about $90 million. A middle school costs about $35 million. And an elementary school costs somewhere in the neighborhood of $18 million. So in terms of our funding for schools, we try to build facilities that are more than adequate, but certainly adequate, but some of the things and amenities, we just simply don't add and we do not put a, I'm not aware of a single middle school that has an auditorium or theater.
It should be the first one. Lauren, so it should be the first one then?
So we're wrapping up, we have two more questions.
At least a Shiloh Middle School, you just walk across the street.
We'll take two last questions, we're going to wrap it up.
Good evening, my name is Molly Taylor Crawford, and I am the President of the United Evidence Society in Gwinnett County. And my question is, how do you think the new ordinance passed by the city of Snellville limiting the number of days a family can stay in an extended stay is going to worsen the education of homeless children in the South Gwinnett Cluster and the Shiloh Cluster with extended stays or de facto housing?
I'm glad you asked that question. In my duties currently, working at the Solicitor General's Office, that has been one of my target projects. You may have recently seen where we targeted Red Roof Inn over in the Norcross area due to the horrific conditions that people are living in, or their drugs, prostitution, everything you can think of. But what we forget sometimes is that there are children and families living in those extended stay hotels. A lot of times, people don't realize why people are staying in extended stay hotels. It could be everything from, they have bad credit, or they've been evicted from a place before. Sometimes people are just living there because they're waiting on their house to finish being built. So there's any number of reasons why those families may be there. And if you, if you're familiar with this issue at all, Norcross did the exact same program that Snellville is doing right now. And Norcross realized the error, they redacted the program and changed it because they did the action before they realized who was actually living in those extended stay hotels. So yes, that situation in Snellville is going to hurt those families. And when you're requiring them to have to check out, you know, and then check back in, typically what's going to happen is that those managers or the owners of those hotels are going to charge them even more money when they come back. And once you already have that stability for your family, because if you hadn't noticed, school buses are pulling up into extended stay parking lots and picking up our children. And so now you're telling them, we're going to ruin your stability. And now you got to go find somewhere else to live and hopefully come back, you know, in a few days or next month, or whatever the case may be. So we're disrupting these families, disrupting their stability. You have some disabled veterans, you have people who only have medical conditions, and they can't just pick up and move that easily. And so we're looking to work with Norcross, and we're more than willing to work with the city of Snellville to adopt a program that's going to be beneficial for those families and most importantly, for those children. Thank you.
Another thing is that Snellville ordinance requires them to have a car.
Yes, that's true, yes.
Now, that is wrong. And we're working and we're reaching out to Snellville so it's more amenable, to realistic. But when we attacked the extended stays, it was to stop prostitution and crimes, not to punish families.
And Mr. Lindsey has a concern, just a minute. Listen, about the pickup spots for the schoolchildren and some of the subdivisions back open in the promised land. The bus won't go into the subdivision, the kids are having to walk out to the corner to catch the bus. Why is that necessary? The bus will not go down into the subdivision, because it's a stop that it's...
They do that a lot of the ways.
I know, I know, but I just...
We have a third, we have a rule of a third of a mile. If it's a third of a mile or less, they walk out plus. And I'm not familiar with those streets, but it's very difficult to get a bus in and out of some of those particular streets. But if it's a third of a mile or less, they're asked to walk to the, you know, main road.
We'll get that information to you. All questions are important. And we will try to reach the speakers with the questions. Make sure we have your email addresses before you leave. At this time, the candidates, the people that are running for political positions here in the county, please come up, so you can identify yourself to the group that's here. And after they've finished that, we're going to call it a night to respect your time and my time. Those that are running for office, please come up. I'll give you the mic so you can introduce yourself and what you're running for. Let's see, move quicker. We're all, two minutes, alright? Good evening, my name is...
My name is Patsy Austin-Caverson. I've been the resident of Gwinnett County for 22 years, and I'm running to be your next District Attorney in Gwinnett County. And I think a lot of the issues we approach tonight are relevant. We have to get to the bottom of where crime starts, and we have to deal with it as a community. I can go on, but I won't. I'll pass on.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Derrick Wilson. I'm running for County Commissioner, District 3. Tonight, we heard a lot. The reason why I run is lack of economic development here in this area. Crime is not, the solution to crime is not more policing, police, police, police. You need to find out why, why is there crime? Well, Centerville has no real economic opportunities in this area. Amazon coming in is not bringing more crime, it's bringing more jobs, which hopefully will lower crime. But again, I'm running for County Commissioner, District 3. My platform is definitely, is going to be back to early childhood education because we can't, we can't fault the parents that's working multiple jobs, living in an extended stay, and then say that they have to do all this and that, where nine times out of 10, his kids want the early childhood education. So again, I'm running for childhood education, early childhood education. I'm running for affordable housing, as well as transportation and economic development throughout District 3.
Good evening. My name is Shagan Adena, and I'm running for Gwinnett County School Board, District 1. This is the time that we need to step forward. What I didn't hear tonight was us talking about the digital age. This is surprising that we're in Gwinnett County and all our kids should have laptops. I worked in IT field for 25 years, and the world is changing, and we're behind. And I say that strongly because my kids go to Gwinnett County schools, and I know some of the challenges that they face. We haven't really addressed where our kids are going to be, the kind of skills that they need. Skills, technical trade skills. Skills that can immediately get to work and be of value to the community. And I'm putting my hand in to be in that position to help guide our, guide our school system in that direction. But we have to be a world-class school system. As we say we're world-class, we have to have the skills in our schools. So again, my name is Shagan Adena. I'm running for Gwinnett County School Board, District 1. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody, can you hear me? My name is John Lloyd, I'm running for District 3. Snellville, Loverville, Grayson, Tecula, Auburn, and Brazelton, South Gwinnett. By 2050, Gwinnett County will be the most populous county in the state of Georgia. And that means there's a lot of change that's certainly coming. Economic development, maintaining good schools, keeping a lid on crime. That's the bottom line for me. And I'm privileged enough to have your vote. I promise and commit to you that I will work every, each and every day to make this county a great place to live, work, and play. I live here with my wife and two children, living in Snellville. I'm privileged to work at the Urban League of Greater Atlanta as the Policy Director, and I work on some of these very most important issues facing our community each and every day. Thank you so much.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Tanisha Banks, and I'm running for District 3 School Board. I am a current special education teacher in Gwinnett County, and I have two children that attend Gwinnett County Schools. I am very invested in the education of our students. I also have my degree in criminal justice. All of the conversation that we were having here today is very real. And a lot of things that we were talking about, I agree with and some I do not. Some of the issues that we didn't address was, why are our children involving themselves in criminal activity? There's a reason behind that. Also, being a teacher, you know, being a teacher and a student is acting out in a certain way. There is a reason why they are acting out. We have to get to the root of those problems in order to stop the issues that are happening in reference to our students committing crimes, getting themselves involved in situations where they shouldn't be, as well as also combating that issue as far as those families living in those extended stays. I know of students personally that live in extended stay hotels. If those extended stay hotels are places where they're unable to stay, it's going to be an issue for our students that are homeless. In reference to getting a bus, it takes seven to 10 days for you to get a bus if you change your address. That seven to 10 days if those students are out of school. Once again, my name is Tanisha Banks, running for District 3. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Andy Morgan, I'm running for Gwinnett County Commission Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Lizzy and the Church for holding this event. I think we need to hold more of these events. I grew up in the inner-city community, which means that based on I understand some of the challenges of trying to educate the education, also dealing with the things that's happening in the community. I think as County Commission Chairman, what my objective is going to be is trying to reach out to me, find ways to get a partner, to find alternatives for our youth, to give opportunities, to find other ways to engage itself other than dealing with the activity. Reality is, a lot of these things become alternatives, but they have no other options or opportunities. So it's important, yes, to get an education, but it's also important to redirect children so that they recognize the points of education that can actually benefit the community. Those things that I, Jennifer, as Gwinnett County's Board of Commissioners, chair. My name's Andy Morgan. If you want to get in touch with me, contact me through www.gwinnettandymorgan.com, Gwinnett County Commission Chairman. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kurt Thompson, and I'm also running for Gwinnett County Commission Chair in the May 19 Democratic primary. I'm a lifelong Gwinetian. I actually grew up here in South Gwinnett, started at Camp Creek Elementary and Kindergarten, went to Shiloh Middle School, and graduated from Shiloh High School. I spent 14 years as one of your state senators, 16 total in the state legislature, fighting for you. And I promise you, if you elect me, if you honor me... And I promise you, if you elect me, if you honor me with your vote, May 19th, and then again November 3rd, I will fight for you every day in Lawrenceville, just as I did, fighting for you every day in Atlanta, to make sure that we have a quality way of life, to make sure that, Winnet is great, I do remember the water towers. May have even visited them illegally as a teenager. And you can do that too, unfortunately. Whether that is transportation and mass transit, whether that's affordable housing, whether that's making sure that we have a fair and equitable way of distributing the county's resources and the opportunities that we have in this county, I will fight for you. And I appreciate the opportunity that you would give me to do that, to continue serving our county. Again, it's Kurt Thompson, kurtforforgwinnet.com for those that want to reach out to me. We'd love to hear from you. Thanks, and please remember the vote.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Ben Haynes, and I'm running to be your next sheriff here in Winnet County. One of the things that we talked about a lot tonight was education coupled with the criminal justice system. One of my top priorities and a key program I'm looking to bring to the sheriff's office is an education program within the jail for the inmates. So that while they're there awaiting trial, which is something Patsy and I can talk about, it takes a long time, unfortunately, for people sitting in jail to get to their trial. Two, three, sometimes four more years. While they're there, if we can get them working on their education, working on a high school diploma, working on a skill like welding. There's a welding program at the Winnet County Prison that's just behind the county jail. If we can bring programs like that into the jails so people can get an opportunity to get out of the rut that they're in, it can get them back on the road to success and help bring these communities back. So again, my name is Ben Haynes, running for sheriff. Website is haynesforsheriff.com. Thank you.
My name is Krista Kirk. I'm running for Superior Court Judge, and I know I'm supposed to campaign right now. But what I want to say is something really touched me tonight, and it's what you said. And I know actually your last name, and I apologize. Mr. Wilson said, "At 23 years old, I found myself to be a single mom of three kids with little resources and very little education. December of 1998, there was a couple from my church that came to my house, and the gift they gave me was what they were going to spend their money on each other for Christmas so I could pay my bills, I could provide my girls at Christmas. They listened to what they were supposed to do, and it changed my life. It made me realize that I had to move forward, and I had to help my children, and I had to get my education. And I ultimately did finish college, finish law school, and go on. But it's because those poor people in the church did what they were called to do. And every year from that point on, God placed somebody in my life to help me as a single mom to raise those kids. So I know I'm supposed to be campaigning, but what I want to say to you is, listen, do it. You don't have to be rewarded for it. Your reward is later. Listen and do what you're supposed to do. And I promise you, I can tell you, you will change a person's life."
Hi, I'm Rebecca Mitchell, and I'm running for House District 106 at the State House, which is mostly Snellville, a little bit of Loganville, a little bit of Grayson, a little bit of Lawrenceville. And I came here tonight really just to listen and to observe what Winnet County is working towards in education and criminal justice reform. And I think my job is to hear what people here have to say, what questions they're asking, and make sure that the state is reflecting the needs of the local population as far as how we're sending our education money and what new policies we're making. As I know, I live in Snellville. And the ordinance that was just passed in Snellville, we have a chance right now to make sure that that does not affect families because there is one extended state in Snellville right now, and they are grandfathered out. So if we can change that ordinance before another extended state gets built, then we have the opportunity to make sure that that does not affect our children or our community. Just, I talked to a member of the town council yesterday to make sure that understood correctly. But I believe the extended state that we currently have is not, is excluded from the new requirements. So what we need to do is make sure that we change it in the future.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Mr. Lizzy, and thank you for everyone who helped plan this great evening. It's really important that we as a community understand what's going on and understand the connection between crime and education. I am BT Parker, and I too am running for Superior Court Judge. As Solicitor White side had indicated, it's very important with regard to crime and education, and a lot of it stops with our judges. It really does. With that being said, I will be starting a second chance accountability court for non-violent, non-sexual offenders so that they can have a second chance so that we can get them educated and get them employed. I've also spoken with people on the school board with regard to starting a project prison prevention program. Try that for a little bit. With that, prison personnel, people in the criminal justice system would go into the schools and talk with the students so they really know what's going on. So why is that important to me? Because I don't want to see them in my courts. I don't want to see them. I'm a foster mother. I was a Juvenile Truancy Intervention Project attorney. I've been an attorney with legal aid. So I have helped those in need. I've seen a lot of what they need, and I don't need to see them in my court. I'm BT Parker. I am running for Superior Court Judge. Oh, also, let me just, for those who are interested, I'm having a golf and tennis challenge at Chateau L'Alain, March 27. And some of those proceeds are going to a carnival which we are having for the Boys and Girls Club during spring break. So BT Parker, be sure to mark her. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. And you need to respect the church's willingness to have us here. So if you could come back again, we need to exit the building as soon as we can. But let's, I'll just miss you with prayer, and then we go. Most gracious we have, my Father. A lot has been said. I pray that hearts will touch, will listen, and that we can come together as a true community to do better for those that are coming behind us. Reading is fundamental. If we don't get them reading at a younger age, they're not going to learn when they get into high school. It's too late in high school. We need to get it done for reading. Thank you, Father, for letting us do what we can do and not to speak what we want to do. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.